All right, call the meeting to order. And I will have a motion on the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, comments, corrections, changes, et cetera, nothing? All in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed?
(inaudible).
Abstentions?
(inaudible).
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna jump around a bit because we have a couple people that may leave early, so we will jump into central office and after that whole discussion of vote, then we'll jump into budget and do all that before we hit any of the other basic stuff. So I will go to central office.
Okay, thank you for taking us out of order. I know you want to go to budget afterwards. Central office, a discussion of superintendent candidate interviews. We're opening up the full committee for discussions. That's what you asked. But also, we have a new business item, vote to consider the appointment of a new superintendent of schools. Are you really combining the two?
Yes.
At this time?
Yep.
I make a motion to merge discussions superintendent candidate interview that occurred much first and vote to consider the appointment of a new superintendent of schools. Is there an object?
Second.
Thank you for letting me start. I appreciate it. Lee?
Did you need to vote for that?
I don't think we need to, but he made the motion. So this is discussion under the motion, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I want to start with saying, I want to thank the subcommittee. I want to thank all committee members here, and I want to thank the community as we move forward on this process. Also, I want to thank the work of the Massachusetts Association School Committee Association that we embarked and worked with not only to put the superintendent profile, community profile together, and then in turn did all the work there, the survey work, and everything else that was put together. I think that we did a good job as a committee. We decided on a process and we followed it through. Then there was the screening process, and then we heard from a candidate and interviewed along, an hour and a half, two hour meeting last week on Thursday. And I will be brief because I know you probably have your comments and perspective as of this perspective, but I thought it was a fantastic interview that the candidate, Dr. Sheila Muir did last week, and myself, I would recommend Dr. Sheila Muir without reservation. Why and how I came up with that statement is based upon my frame of reference and observation. What I know about Sheila Muir as an assistant superintendent and as an educator, aside from an excellent interview, a person who is a known person, a person who has a passion about the success of students, she has not only echoed that, emulates that, and has lived that, her career from a teacher all the way to any prospective leadership positions, from teacher leadership positions to administrative positions, not only in this district but in other districts that she's worked. I can only know her in this district. Committed again to the profession and the community, a competent educator and administrator, excellent communicator, and definitely fantastic, and I believe understands the community and can listen to the needs of the community and help guide as we decide, if we decide to recommend Dr. Muir as our superintendent elect, she would leave this district with the vision and mission that we continue to embark on. Dedicated, caring person, consensus builder, and I truly, truly believe have a leadership temperament, passion to lead the district forward. And lastly, when you looked at the recommendations, we also had, as we all had, not only what we saw in person, we have seen the work and the work that Dr. Sheila Muir has done with Maureen and the staff and the teachers at Quaven Regional School District. The letters of recommendation, not only aside from her boss, the superintendent, Greg Devine of principal, Senator Broua, and even, not, not-
Even?
Even, Evan, Evan Berry, Evan Berry, which speaks about consensus building, about how you work with the phrases we might use as stakeholders and phrases like that. But as you get through those words that we use, what do you need? What do we need? We need a person who can lead this district, who can hit the ground running and do the work, and I truly believe she is passionate, caring, and committed to do that and has the skills to do so. So that's my brief comment.
Okay, well, first, I'm gonna go on this side of the room because I always seem to look to this side of the room. So this side, anybody wish to speak? Okay, we're good, all right? Richard, you were first, hand up.
Yeah, I think that this is a good move, and I base this on a couple of things. You heard me say, most districts these days are fighting fires. And yes, we have our fires to fight, we're well aware of those, we do the best we can. But we're also doing academic things, we're doing instructional things, we're doing instructional improvement things, we're looking down the road kinds of things. It's clear we value our teachers and what they do and how they do these things. And when I look at these programs like that elementary school language arts, which I bring up continually because that's, of course, the best program we have in this district, and we now added on the math and the science, and we have the ID, and we have the advanced placement, and we have the band, and ROTC, and all that. The academic things, the school things, the enrichment for children, the helping them move out into the world as prepared as possible, witness what we say in our mission statement, all of those things come from Sheila. The more I look at them, the more I understand this. Now, interviews are great, but I long ago learned an interview doesn't really tell the whole story. Maybe it tells very little part of the story, but the history, what she's done over time, with whom, and look who the letters of reference are from. You know, I hear from parents and political leaders and just a myriad of folks saying, you know, she's doing a nice job. And I think if we can go ahead with somebody we know and have some confidence in, that that's very important. We saw what happened last time. And I think you always will, I believe. And he's up with it. We remember it well. And I think we can move ahead with more confidence with somebody that we have a history with.
Thanks.
Dick?
I was reflecting back on Sheila and her interview, and I've got a rather, I think, an interesting perspective in that I thought I started in the school committee for the past three years, but I worked in the district up until 2014. And I was trying to frame what I remember about Sheila and her leadership skills, and I'm gonna mark it by the race to the top in 2009. And this may not be chronological, but it's things that really stuck out in my mind, and it goes a little bit with what Dr. Allen just said. She's constantly evaluating and monitoring the curriculum standards. There's been curriculum development with the faculty that makes instruction more meaningful for the kids. The district determined measures, the Aspen grading, my personal favorite, Teach Point, the readers and the writers workshop that Dr. Allen referred to. And what impresses me, every time I walk into an elementary school, I look for the data walls because it tells me that the people in that building are focused in on the achievement of the kids in real time in math and reading, and it's all there for everyone to see, and that was really something that Sheila led. The Eureka Math, we saw that last fall, what's happening there. This last spring and summer, Mark and I sat in on the negotiations, and we negotiated contracts with six of the bargaining units, and Sheila was a huge contributor to that. And going forward now, she really has an understanding and an insight into what issues may be coming up. I think the fact that the QRTA and Evan, or Evan, wrote her letter of recommendation speaks volumes about what she has done for the district. And going back to all those initiatives that were put into place while I was still an employee, Maureen would kind of roll it out, she'd be the opening band, get us all whipped up, and then Sheila, she pushed Sheila through the door, and Sheila would have to talk about the process. And that's when the heavy sighs in the room would start and the eye rolling. And Sheila would just, what she did was, in my mind, now thinking back on it, she modeled best practices, the kind of things she wanted the teachers to model. She engaged the teachers, she motivated them, she was there to sustain whatever the initiative was, and she was there to support the teachers. And she became a consensus builder because she talked about the fact that the people, some of the people didn't particularly care for the readers writers workshop when it was first rolled out. What stuck out in my mind during the interview was she said that her decision-making process for the district would be based on what's best for the children. And we could complain all we wanted, and she would try to work with us as best she could, but the idea was is that what was happening was best for the kids. And there's a consistency and a momentum in the district right now that I can see from my perspective, that I really, I find it remarkable, and I think that to sustain that, that Sheila Muir would be the best candidate for superintendent.
Thank you. This side, anybody else? Tex?
Sheila Muir is a very good candidate, no question about it. From my perspective, I would have preferred that we had more exposure to different candidates so we could compare. I mentioned that at our subcommittee meeting, and so that we could present it to the full committee and say, well, this is the way we looked at it, with the people that we interviewed, et cetera, et cetera. I'm sure that Sheila Muir would be a fine, fine superintendent. But in the back of my mind, there will always be the doubt that says, maybe there was somebody else that was a little better, or could have offered a different perspective on what we have here. I know we're a tough district, we're a small area, we don't pay as well as some other people do, that's for damn sure. But those are my thoughts about this.
Anybody on the other side? We still done? Are we done? I'll offer a couple pointers, not so much on Sheila herself, a couple things. I appreciate your point of view, but the thing is, the full committee voted to take this approach. If Sheila's voted down, then the next approach will be to go regional or national or whatever that would be, and we'd have to gear that into motion. I would say that we're not voting here today on the way we should have done it or the way somebody thinks we should have done it, et cetera. We're voting on the candidate, and that's what the vote should be. But it's important to each and every one of us that it's our vote, that it's not what our spouse wants or our significant other wants or the kids down the street wants. You know, you've sat here, you've seen her every meeting, you were here for the interview. I would say that if you, I would suggest that if you don't vote for her, and once again, that's your vote, I would suggest that you, whether she gets elected or not, that then you take the time to sit down with her privately and say, if that's the case, here's why I didn't vote for you. Because from my personal experience in the Army and transitioning from the Army into the private sector, the thing that I did like, that I hated the most when I was looking for other jobs, not so much that I got refused, but people would refuse me and just not have a meeting, because I wanted to find out why you wouldn't vote for me. You know, how can I better myself? And that's what we should be doing also as a committee. Even if she gets elected, if there's a couple votes, or even if you're on the line and you say, fine, I voted for you, set up a meeting with her and say, you know, I was really on the line, I did vote for you, but I have a number of issues with this. Sit down with her so that if she gets voted in, she could be utilized as to maybe be a better person because we're all looking to improve, and from what I know of Sheila, she's looking to improve also. You know, so that's kind of my suggestion. So-
I have a question.
May I answer your, your point then? I believe that I answered the question when I was explaining myself. The reason why, and I said it, because I don't know what's out there. That's the reason why I was going to-
I can appreciate, I'm not criticizing that approach, I'm just saying-
I just want to make myself clear on that.
Oh, I understand that. But the other thing, another thing, Tex, you have to understand too is, I mean, I guess people are taking the supposition that if we went regional or national, there'd be this plethora of candidates. That's not necessarily the answer either. I'm not saying you're saying that, but I'm saying some people seem to be hooked on, oh, there'll be a whole number of people. There may not be.
This is true.
I mean, there might be something where we get just one other candidate, and then we'd be, you know, maybe in the same boat saying, oh gee, we have nobody to compare him or her to. So I can appreciate your position, but once again, it doesn't presuppose that they'll will have like five, six, seven, eight wonderful candidates to choose from. That's, you know-
Again, we're arguing about semantics.
I know, I understand that.
Okay, so, I mean, if we're gonna go that route, we can go at it.
I don't want to go at it, I'm just saying that that's-
Well, that's the way you're putting it out.
Okay. Any other comments?
So if Sheila was voted down tonight, could she not still be in the pool if we had to go outside?
That would be her choice.
Okay. She would have to reapply?
Yep.
Okay.
Dick?
Yeah, I think Tex is raising a valid point, but I think we had it covered, at least in my mind, by this Tracy Novick because we had asked her, and I checked with Mark a number of times to see that this happened, that she would compare to the pool out there the candidacy of Sheila. And my understanding is she was saying, yeah, she does put her better than anybody you're gonna find out there.
Correct.
Yeah, Mark says correct. So, but Tex is right. If we thought that there were better people out there, we certainly should have gone and done that. From what I see, I wasn't seeing any. And I think that Tracy's job, part of Tracy's job to us was to help give us some confidence that we had a good viable candidate who was as good or better than anybody we find.
The other thing I wanted to say is kind of echo on some of these other thoughts was that when we decided to do the internal posting and the search, and it was presented in a way that we would be looking at other people in the district that may want to pursue that, and I feel like the posting itself was kind of designed to limit that pool of people that we, that I thought that maybe we would have more people applying internally. And I feel like the description that we came out in, the posting, kind of limited that. So that's just my thought.
I would just make a point that there's only three individuals certified in the district that could have applied for the job due to licensure issues, myself, Cheryl, or Sheila. That's the only people who have-
Well, when it was presented to us, it made it seem like there was more, that was more of an option, so I was just kind of disappointed about that.
I just wanted to make a comment about when Tracy Novick was here from the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, and she talked to us in the fall. And so did you, at the NASDAQ. The premise was, you have to understand what a match is. You couldn't look at somebody in a home run on interviews, you could have somebody with wonderful credentials all over the place, from anywhere and everywhere, but you have to understand what a match to the district is. And Sheila Muir is the correct match for the current for a superintendent at this time, where we are.
Tracy said it.
That's my job, look at magic.
It's interesting though, like, just finding out now that there were only three people that were able to accept the job, but that never came up earlier, it's kind of interesting.
Can I just-
Just a comment.
Okay, as one of those people that hold that license, that's not actually accurate because you can apply for the license very quickly, but there was no one, there was no one from the teaching ranks, there was no one from the principal ranks. I don't see it as being as limited as you read the posting.
The posting kind of limited the people that could apply, so.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make one comment because it's always been on my mind, is that this is the one job that we have as a committee. Probably our one and only, most important job is to choose our superintendent, and I'm just concerned, and I think Sheila would be wonderful, don't get me wrong, I just want to know that I did make the right choice. You know, by not looking at anybody else, that's just a fear that I have, even though I support Sheila 100 percent.
All right, so-
Make a motion to recommend Sheila Muir-
Second.
-as our superintendent elect.
Second. Okay. Any further comment? All right. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Abstentions? All right, thank you.
Were there just three abstentions? Were there any abstentions over here?
Greg. Jeff.
Yep.
The guy over in the corner. The good-looking one. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
Any other motions?
What's the, all set? Motion passed?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion of reconsideration? Or let's move, or no one's scared?
No.
I would advise that.
Make a-
A motion to reconsider. The way we see it.
Correct. Make a motion, I said, make a motion to reconsider. I second that.
What does that mean?
Okay, I'll second it.
No, you made the motion.
Oh, wait a minute.
Okay.
Technically, I apologize. Tex can make a motion if you're being voted-
He wasn't on the prevailing side. You have to be on the prevailing side, correct.
I mean, so I don't know.
What would that mean? Explain it.
Albatairian, do we need one?
Yeah, to reconsider, it's a two-thirds vote, to reconsider a motion that has been passed on the floor. But in order to even have a motion on the floor for reconsideration, a member voting in the affirmative, the prevailing side, must make that motion. And Tex did not vote on that prevailing side, so he can't make the motion, and you seconded it, but-
No, 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 he made the motion, I just seconded it.
No. I was asking, I was asking the chair for-
Yeah, I thought Tex made, I thought Tex made the motion.
No, I didn't make the motion.
Maureen, what would a reconsider- A reconsideration vote is that you reconsider the vote you just made.
Right.
I don't know why one would do that, but you can do it.
The reason why it is made is to seal it, otherwise it cannot come up again.
Oh.
It concludes, it puts the line on it.
So if you vote, if you vote no to reconsider, you're affirming the previous motion or the previous, okay. Well, we don't need to if you don't think we need to.
I, I'm not making a motion.
I mean, we had an overwhelming vote.
Okay. The only motion that I have to make is, I would authorize, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the chair to go into negotiations, to work out in contract negotiations with the superintendent elect, Dr. Sheila Muir.
Okay. All in favor of the motion on the floor? Please raise your hands. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Yes.
Just a quick comment, if you don't know.
Go ahead.
I'm reflecting back 30-plus years ago, when she was elected superintendent.
Scary time.
Very.
And my friend Frances Kromelski said, you've been a principal for one year. What are you doing running for superintendent? Don't you need more time? And she gave her response, and so Corey'd been here for 20-plus years, I think, as superintendent. And he said, oh, I get it, this bus doesn't come along very often. That's a direct quote of what he said at that time. This bus doesn't come along very often. Best we'd make a good decision, and I think we did.
The thing that you have to understand is the average life of a superintendent in a school district is four years. They don't stay very long, and that's often because of issues between school committees and superintendents. And I have always felt nearly blessed to have the school committee that I've had with a lot of very strong individuals who've been here for numbers of years and people who've come and gone, and tremendous support. And I know that as Sheila talked about this job to me, she was always focused on the fact that the committee that she would work with was honest and appropriate and would tell her the truth and give her the information that she would need to be the best superintendent possible. And I certainly said to her, there's not many superintendents that I know who, when they talk about their school committees, they have lots of war stories. I don't even have any. I can occasionally have a story about my buddy Tex, but other than that, and I mean, I saw, and I know that Sheila feels that this is the superintendency that she would seek because a great deal of what the school committee believes and that her core values are definitely matched with yours. And another thing in this, in this school district, and I say this because I absolutely mean it, that you have a very strong financial arm here. You have Cheryl and her team, and so what happens financially in this school district is well-managed. You know that. So you can, you can have, as you're building your team, your central office team, you want a complementary skill set. To hire somebody who's strong where Cheryl is is a waste of your money. To hire someone that is strong where Cheryl isn't is a good use of your money. And definitely, Sheila's wheelhouse is not there. Sheila's wheelhouse is in teaching and learning and the really, really significant stuff. So she and Cheryl will have to talk about what their jobs will look like, and so on and so forth. And so I'm pleased that you've decided to give Cheryl the opportunity to serve the district, to continue to serve in this situation. And when I was elected superintendent in 1986, a long time ago, in this district, there were two-
You remember it well.
There were two people who didn't vote for me. I can't even remember their names. So what matters is, is that I always, and Sheila views the same way, it's the students that we work for, and fortunately, it's the school committee that we work with. And, you know, I think, it was Tracy said, or maybe Mark, a superintendent is just a three-year contract, and if things aren't working out, you can decide, or that person can decide to make a different decision. But I think you made a fabulous decision, and I think this time next year, you will feel comfortable and confident. And I know a whole lot of superintendents, trust me, and I would never, I would never say to you to put this district in the hands of someone for whom I did not have the ultimate respect. Really, I would never do that. And obviously, you could have interviewed some people that I didn't know, and we would have vetted them in a different way, but as I, as I think about moving on and, you know, leaving this school district, and understanding that someone is going to replace me, I am absolutely thrilled that the person who's going to replace me is someone who cares more about the students than almost any other person I know in this school district, and I mean that. She does, and her work ethic is extraordinary, and she will outwork most of them and all, and I don't know, Ned Kelly was chatting with me today, and he, I think he was paying me a compliment, but I'm not quite sure. He said, you know, Maureen, we always had confidence in you because you're ruthless. And he said, well, you know, you would do what you needed to do to get the job done. And he said, do you think Sheila's ruthless? And I said, well, how about tenacious and dedicated? So at any rate, I am thrilled with you, with your decision, and you know I will work as hard as I can work to make this transition as perfect as it can be and be available to Sheila or to anybody who may need, you know, just some institutional memory, just because they can say, what happened when? And I go, you know what happened when? And we can go through it. And I can even say to Jess, Jess, go back in the minutes to January about 1989, and you'll see that this and this and this happened. So I will have that institutional memory, and that will be available to anybody who feels it may be necessary. But I thank you for giving her an opportunity, and I look forward to watching the future.
All right, budget. Mark, you want to?
Okay. On the 15th of, I think, first of all, in your package is FY '19 appropriations and control report with the original preliminary budget figures that we come up with back in, I think it was January, right Cheryl?
Yes.
And then, you realize that with this process, assessments were still a good reach on many of the towns. So we went back, Cheryl went back and gave us some proposed cuts, which we felt were acceptable, to bring it to the 31, 34, excuse me, 34173990 figure, which is- which is an $834,000 reduction from the preliminary, the first iteration of 35, 008, 303. But we're actually, if you take a look, you don't have the assessments, but with the, with the current budget situation and things not changing a whole lot, which they made on the road, I mean, we may get some, you know, a little bit of additional resources.
We believe that revenues will be significantly different as the House and Senate begin to, you know, deliberate with the budget, state budget.
But the range of, the range of actual assessment figures increases is, you know, OKAM with a high of 6.44, based upon its budget, Hubbardston trailing close behind with a 5.75 percent increase, Barry 4.71, Hardwick 3.35, and I think Green Tree 1.31. Cheryl, am I correct here with these?
Yes.
And again, these are very preliminary, and as a result of our budget hearing next week, you know, there could be some movement in either direction. You know, I would think that possibly some towns may have some concerns about the figures, but as we get some additional resources from the state, we may be able to mitigate that particular issue. So I guess I'm making a recommendation that, that we actually move forward with the $34,000,001,73,990 budget, which is the iteration two on your sheet, and bring that to the full hearing next week.
Okay, and that's a motion, correct?
That's a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? To me, the next week's meeting will be here, correct?
Yes.
Nobody? All right, well, let's go for it then. Oh.
What's the difference in district administration? Is that related to the superintendent?
Yeah. I believe we're probably going to have to pay more than $70,000 or $60,000 for salary next year.
And then are we planning on hiring the assistant, or have you decided?
That, that is in, that is in this budget.
That's in the budget?
Yes, it is.
The budget, but.
Okay.
Yes. When we interviewed the assistant superintendent, who is now going to be the superintendent, there's also some discussion about some reorganization, which, you know, I, I really hope that we can make some efficiency, maybe some cost efficiencies over the course of next year, which might help us with that particular area, whether it's reorganizing department, a position, or whatever, which Sheila seemed very amenable to at least talking about.
Mark?
Can you give us, Maureen, the timeline as we go forward? This is a preliminary budget that we're bringing up, and we know as we work through this, it's an ongoing process. Can you give us an outline to, we have a couple new members on the committee, so we understand how the budget process works as we go forward?
Well, basically, we'll have the public hearing, and Cheryl will give lots and lots of information and data to folks about our communities, as well as the budget process at that time. But basically, once we get to the March 15th, if we have public comment about the budget, obviously for the committee's use, and you can say, "Okay, let's see if we can make..." Maybe somebody will come in and say, "You know, you really should have a bigger music program. You should hire another music teacher." That's a fantasy, probably not going to happen. Or someone could come in and say, "We really need you to adjust those assessments down. We need more reductions out of the budget." So that, there'd be conversation at the public hearing. After the public hearing, we would, you know, continue to work on the budget, and continue to work legislatively to hopefully increase the revenues, increase transportation reimbursement, increase some issues with Chapter 70. There's a miscount in how many students were actually counted in a special education situation. We may have some additional monies coming in that area. So if there are additional revenues, then we would bring that information back to the committee. That would not be until into April, because remember, the House doesn't really come out with a preliminary budget, which would give us new per pupil, okay? The governor said $20 a student. Now, they could say $50 a student. They could, we've been, the governor's budget reduced our transportation reimbursement by $100,000. That could go back in when the House deliberates. That's not until at least the third week in April. We need to have assessments to the member towns before the end of April. So basically, we'll be continuing to work with you on this budget, working with revenue numbers. We have more opportunity in the area of revenues than we do actually getting in and doing much more cutting in this budget. So, you know, by the end of April, we will have some numbers to the town. There's no question that even after that, the Senate will get involved with this. And if they get involved, and we get even, you know, a little more money in, say, regional transportation, we won't know that until probably after conference committee. And so right up until those town meetings happen, we could be having conversations with our budget and finance committees and our school committee about X revenues, and thus the assessments could wobble a little bit. But we have an obligation, at least by statute, to give them an assessment by the end of April. So we'll be working to, with you to do that.
Sparsity aid, anything in the world?
Well, Cheryl and I, Cheryl and I will be attending a meeting at Mohawk Trail Regional, where Senator Hines and some representatives, Representative Quly, and the head honchos from DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, will be, will be there in presenting information. There will be efforts by the Rural Schools Coalition to put sparsity aid on the table, to drive that through. Senator Rosenberg is working with us on that. There could be, there could be some help and assistance there. I mean, getting, getting the legislation in subject to appropriation could mean we get the legislation in, but we don't get any money this year. We'll also, at that meeting, be pushing for regional school transportation for that, you know, to, the percentage of reimbursement to increase. So we'll be there Monday night. There are also a number of legislative breakfasts that I will be attending, and other legislative meetings. And we will, on March 19th, I believe, the chair and the vice chair are joining me over to Quabog. And we'll be meeting with Senator Goby, Representative Berthium, and also Representative Schmola from that area of the communities to talk similar about, about these issues. So we begin our work at the legislative level, because that's where, we need revenue from them. We need help from them. The governor is, he's not a big, shall we say, school guy. He just isn't. So it is what it is with him.
Well, he's charter.
Yeah, exactly. He's now, now charter schools are allowed to modify their bylaws to become regional schools, so they can access transportation for their students and reimbursement from the same pot. That's the problem. You know, if you want to do that, then add money to regional school transportation reimbursements. Most of you are very familiar with the State Auditor's Report, which is very specific that you have underfunded, undercompensated, probably saw my whining in the newspaper, regional schools. And you, just because we happen to be east of 495, doesn't mean that there isn't some, it shouldn't be some effort, you know, to say, "Even though you were born in that zip code, you deserve a good education."
West of 495.
Yeah, west, sorry, yeah. Wish I was east.
Just a couple comments. The preliminary information on this budget, you know, as a result of our meeting, you know, on the 15th, we asked that it get up on the website. And it's out there for people to take a look at. And, you know, to, you know, apprise themselves of what's going on far in advance of the hearing. I mean, we did that last year, and, you know, we've got it out there again. You know, also, you know, we're talking about a 1.95 percent increase. We're talking under 2 percent increase. When I look at, you know, other school districts, what they're proposing, you know, I think we're really in the range of what's happening out there, and below some other districts that are actually making proposals. The two towns that are probably going to get hit the most, or that have concerns as of right now, and, you know, I talked to some people in Hubbardston, I mean, Hubbardston's not a target share. OKAM's still not a target share. So, I mean, these are things that are driving their increase over last year, rather than us, you know, proposing a budget which is really far in excess of what we can afford.
But we'll continue to work with our towns. I know we're doing Barry sometime in April for a meeting with our budget and finance committee there. We met tonight before this meeting with the budget and finance from OKAM, and had a good conversation with, you know, where we've been the last year, and where we need to go, and what their numbers are, because obviously, these are difficult assessments. I'm not going to make it like they're not. Last year, Hubbardston had a negative assessment. Negative, in the negative. So it was a real easy town meeting, as I remember. But this year, obviously, it's higher than, and we understand, it is a struggle, because just as we are, you know, have less receipts from the state, so do the towns.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and seconded to go with what is on this sheet as marked as fiscal year '19 proposal number two for a total amount of $34,173,990. All in favor, please raise your hands.
We have to pull through.
Oh, that's right, we have to. My bad.
And also, it's the appropriation control report.
Yeah.
Yes.
So just so that our new member understands, and some may, other, refresh your memory maybe, due to a conflict of interest of one of our members on the school committee, the full committee would vote on one particular category, and the person with the conflict of interest, because they work in a capacity that paid, that line item pays their salary, would have to abstain from that line. So we need to look at line number 3510 to 3520, athletics and student activities, in the amount of $556,433, and take that as a first vote. Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sarabia?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. LeClaire?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Abstained.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Jean-François?
Yes.
And Chairman Wilanen?
Yes. Now, under the conflict of interest statute, if that line item was approved by two-thirds of the members of the committee, then the full committee, including Mrs. Thompson, may vote on the bottom line of $34,173,990.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sarabia?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. LeClaire?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Jean-François?
Yes.
And Chairman Wilanen?
Yes.
Okay. Any more budget, or?
No. We have a meeting next week.
March 15th.
March 15th, posted, and we'll see what we have for the superintendent's comments. Have that meeting and bring them back to the floor.
He's leaving, and so is Nick.
All right, thank you.
6:00 PM, 6:00 PM meeting. Mr. Wiggler? At your request, I did do a little work on target share, but since you're leaving the meeting, will we hold that till next week?
Well, I'm not leaving until.
Oh, okay. I thought you were leaving right after this.
He'll hang for a bit. Okay, so now let's revert back to the normal schedule of things. So superintendent schools.
Basically, we've had some, say, a busy month between this meeting and the one that preceded it. Just to let you know that yesterday, and again tomorrow, there will be Alice training about school safety and security will be at the, you know, finishing, they will be finishing their second day of training here. We're very fortunate, and I just wanted to make the committee aware of it, that we'd received a grant from the Barry Savings Bank Foundation under the auspices of the Fidelity Bank for $17,000 to, not only for the Alice training, but to do some things, you know, kind of retool some of our doors and buy some materials to make it so that we can actually lock them in ways that the intruder would not be able to access the classrooms. So we'll be working on that, Claire and I, and some of the other building, people have walked through buildings to look at some of our options. And I understand through the Alice training, there are even new options that may be available to us. We're very fortunate also to receive, to have received the Homeland Security Grant that was written by one of the Hardwick police officers. And so a lot of our area police are in this Alice training and are being subsidized by the Homeland Security Grant. So we're really very happy to see that. Obviously, we had put a grant into the Barry Savings Bank Trust, the Fidelity Bank, about a week or two before the very sad situation that happened in, down in Florida. And needless to say, we were immediately offered the grant, like, you know, so we're very, very pleased and very, you know, appreciative of the help that allowed us to train most of our administrators, some of our police officers in the town of Barry and Hubbardston, and to pay their freight for that training. I want to thank the administrators who participated in the training. It's taking them away from their regular job, and yesterday, they were all watching the snow as they were doing the active shooter drill. And we have a little clip of a film of them actually doing their active shooter drill that we'll show you in a minute. Also, high school scheduling is moving along, and we are beginning to get some preliminary numbers that will determine our staffing pattern at the high school. That could impact budget in some ways, so we're working on that. And I know within the next couple weeks, we should have some basic tallies. We're making good progress with our security, safety and security planning for the district, and I know that there've been some trials of where we're evacuating kids at the elementary schools. Our elementary principals are working directly with some of our police officers in those areas. We'll be doing more of that work once our high school administration is trained in Alice training and so forth. One thing that's nice is the Barry Police Department, who is responsible for this building, this building and also the middle high school, is actually in the same training with our administrators, and that's a good thing. So our plan has been from the beginning that we will have a very comprehensive safety and security plan done by June 30th. We're moving forward with our policy manual update, that I know you're all appreciative of. You'll see a number of policies moved off the table tonight. There's others coming probably later on in probably May, so that we will have a brand-new policy book before June 30th as well. And on March 14th, we'll be having our second Plan for Success meeting for our administrative team and others. And so we will be hopefully ready to do that strategic plan and have that presentation to the school committee before the end of the school year. As you remember, we were hopeful that we would be able to do this, so the transition to a new superintendent would be relatively smooth, and some of these big projects would be behind us. So those things are moving along, I think, in a timely way, and I'm happy to say that I will be happy when they're all done and prepared for you. And other than that, you want to show the video? Yeah, I'm going to get the lights, so people don't have to look over me. Could be workman's comp if I turn over the box. I'm not paying it. I know. Well, that's my last real word.
I am. Oh, power would help. Takes a second to come up.
Is it just warming up?
It's warming up.
That's not very interesting.
It's warming up, right, Andrew?
It's warming up. This is the, actually.
Yep.
Almost looked like it was a skeletal colostom.
Like a what?
We made the Worcester TV station. Greg, you're, you're, you got a cameo there, kiddo.
Switching gears now, almost one month after a mass shooting in Parkland, Florida, a Central Massachusetts school is taking precautions to keep their students and faculty safe. Wednesday, Quabbin Regional High School hosted an active shooter drill to show the realities of a shooting. Arby Schaefer has more.
Quabbin Regional High School is hosting a two-day safety training program with an active shooter scenario. Superintendent Maureen Marshall says the lifelike scenario is sobering. In just one minute, this person acting as an active shooter shot a majority of the people participating in the drill.
60 to 70 percent of you actually just got shot.
In this scenario, participants were told to follow an old emergency plan, where students and teachers lock the classroom door and hide. Now, Alice Training Institute is teaching a more effective course of action.
What was once considered best practice isn't necessarily considered best practice anymore. That's why we have this training, there's a need for this type of training, to be able to be put in place to heighten people's survivability. It gives them options.
Trainer Sean Kennedy says Alice options include hiding, running, or fighting back. It depends on the situation, but Kennedy says putting people in these drills give them a better understanding of what to do.
We learn by actually getting hands-on, getting experience. You can tell somebody all day long, "Hey, you can do this, you can do that, you can do this." But once they, now they experience it, they start to establish that connection.
It becomes real, because you're saying, "Are they coming down our hallway? Will it be my classroom? Are they going to burst in here?"
In addition to the training, Barry Police will now have a permanent officer at the high school for better security.
For all of our population, we see students as needing to have the protection, because you just never know. And with the incidents that occur around the country, we want to focus our efforts on the school.
Wednesday's training was made possible through a 17,000... Wednesday's training was made possible through a $17,000 grant from the Barry Savings Charitable Foundation. President Stephen Brewer says it was an easy decision.
We unanimously voted to expend $17,000 to fund this program. It's a bit of reality that makes us all extraordinarily uncomfortable, but necessary to protect our children to the best extent possible.
Now, some of this $17,000 will be used towards new locks on the classroom doors. The superintendent says most of the doors open outwards, therefore, if anyone unwanted wanted to get inside, they wouldn't be able to barricade the doors, and with new locks, they could keep anyone unwanted from getting inside. In Barry, I'm Brittany Schaefer, Worcester News Tonight. Switching gear.
Okay.
Very nice.
Just, please understand that I really appreciate the fact that we had several school committee members who came and, you know, observed the drill a little bit, and I think that it's always interesting to actually see it, and we're really happy to be able to pick up this little clip from the TV show, because I think it gives you an idea of what was going on. And while, you know it's fake, this, he's making so much noise, and there's so many things, you're kind of getting rattled, wouldn't you say?
He was chilling.
Yeah, I mean, and you're saying...
That guy was going around with a phone gun.
If this was really real, I mean, if this was, you know, boy, it's very sobering. And I know that Sue and others went through that when they were at a different school, but in the fall, the elementary folks and the middle school principal, Sue Miss Nicky, have already participated in the Alice training. So, we're hopeful that all of this work that we're putting into it will give us an absolutely state-of-the-art, you know, program, and everybody will, you know, we're very unusual for a school district. Not only have we trained every administrator who basically can be involved, but we have also become a, what we call an Alice training site. So, there are 56 different people, police officers, guidance counselors from other schools, from Connecticut, from, from New Hampshire, from different parts of Massachusetts. So, we are a site, so that's a good thing, and I'm hopeful that we will be advertised as a site, and what happens is, we get so many to sign up, we can train other people free. So, we're very fortunate to have a big class, this is a very large class of 56 people. And I don't believe that was Quabbin's issue, I think that was the Florida issue that really has pushed us, not, this, you know, training session to be so full. But anyway, you saw the number of Barry Police Officers we had, they were the ones all in uniform. Other police officers were all dressed just in sort of casual clothes, and so, I couldn't have identified all of them for you, but at any rate. And our, our police officers couldn't participate in the active shooter drill, because they had live ammunition and guns on them, so they couldn't participate. I don't think that they were upset about that. I think they enjoyed the, being observers. So, other than that, that's, you know, we had some good stuff happening between our last meeting and tonight.
Okay. Okay, Sheila's not here, there's nothing on her plate that you were going to report on, right?
No.
Cheryl?
Presentation of warrants. Since our last meeting, the warrant subcommittee has approved payroll warrants numbers 17 and 18, and accounts payable warrants 17V, 18A, 18B, 18V, 19A, 19V, and 20B, for our new member, and to remind others, an A at the end of an accounts payable warrant number means it's a regular bill-paying warrant, and checks are cut, checks are processed. A B means that we are processing a wire transfer, and the V is for our vending program, which is an auto debit. So, the way in which we have to fund a particular warrant is why they're numbered differently. Since our last meeting, our OPEB trust fund paperwork has been completed and filed, so the fund will be effective on May 10. That's 90 days after the school committee's vote to establish the fund, which is mandated by statute, and the district will make its first deposit of $10,001 sometime in May or the 1st of June. In your packet is a document that I put together, that Mr. Wiggler asked me to try to come up with a way to better explain target share, so I've done my best. Simplified. The first one is my work, but if you could just pass over that first page, which I had hoped would be in color for you, but I sent it to the printer incorrectly. The next couple of pages are actually from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, explaining the Chapter 70 formula and target share. Great bathroom reading for you. After that is the actual calculation of target share for each of the member towns. Again, this is a Department of Ed, Department of Revenue document. This is not something that I put together. But what I, what you need to understand about this document, when you start reading it, is that the contributions are calculated for all education in a town. So, for example, the town of Okham would have a, of this contribution, part of it comes to Quabbin, part of it, there, it goes to themselves, because they are paying tuition for agricultural vocational students. For the town of Barry, there would be, this money would be split between Quabbin and Monty Tech. So, it's for all education, not just Quabbin. So, if you take a number, and you try to find it on my worksheet, you're not going to see it there. So, if you want to go to the top page, what I basically did was to take the five individual town reports, and put them all together so that you can see. So, on line one, the whole calculation starts with the 2016 equalized valuation on each of the towns, and then they apply a percentage to that, and you can see going across line two, that's equal for all of the member towns at .3642 percent. So, they're increasing the evaluation, the evaluation amount by that to come up with a new property wealth number. So, everybody's getting the equal increase in that. The next part of the formula is income wealth. They take, they use the 2015 income, and that comes from the Department of Revenue for each town, and they increase that by 1.4174 percent for all the towns. So, again, you're getting an equal increase for property value, and an equal increase for income wealth. And then that comes up to row seven, the two numbers added together, and that is the basis for the calculation. That's your initial calculation for the contribution. Then the next line, line eight, foundation budget, is the number determined by DESE, which is what they expect that you would pay for education in total for the town. Line nine takes 82.5 percent of row eight, and that is what target share really is trying to do. It's trying to say that each municipality in the Commonwealth should strive to pay 82 and a half percent of their foundation budget through local sources. Almost impossible, but there are towns that do it. So, if you just look at Barry, it says that the combined effort for Barry would be 3.5 million, that's what Barry should be able to pay, but the maximum local contribution in line nine is $7.4 million. So, what that equates to is what Maureen and I harp about all the time, that the district's foundation budget is not large enough for the expenses that we have. The state is trying to say that Barry, you should be paying $7.4 million for education, but they're only charging 3.5 to start. You can't pay 7.4 million. That's how out of whack the entire formula is. The next line, line 10, is the lesser of seven, the 3.5 million dollars for Barry, or the 7.4. So, they go with the 3.5. They're saying Barry should contribute 3.5 million dollars for education next year. The local target share is then a calculation, it's a percentage of row 10 over row eight, or 39.2 percent. And then the next number is just one minus that to say what the, what the aid share for the state should be. So, you should pay attention to line 11, that's what we're talking about now. So, the second part of the formula is to look at, what did you contribute for this current year? And we're going to raise that, and see if you can pay for that. So, on line 13, it has the required local contribution for all of the towns. Again, the asterisk is there to say that's for education in all of your districts that a town belongs to, so don't try to match it up to the revenue reports that I do. Here's where it gets interesting, because the municipal revenue growth factor is the first time that things, a percentage is not applied equally to the numbers for each town. So, you can see across line 14, that they are going to raise last year's contribution amount by 3.65 percent for Barry, but only 3.03 percent for Okham. So, that's where the disparity starts to fall into place when we do the assessment When they raise last year's contribution amount by the municipal revenue growth factor, it then comes up with a preliminary contribution for FY19. That's on row 15. And as a percentage of the foundation budget up in line eight, now there's another percentage we're looking at. Remember, we said Barry can pay 39.32, that's their target? Well, with this increase over last year's submission, it would go to 40.95, their over target share. So, that's what it means when we say Barry, Hardwick, and New Braintree are over target share. The calculation comes out to a number that is greater than the DOR says that they should be paying for education. When you look at Hubbardston and Okham, Hubbardston's target share contribution should be 54.86 percent, line 11. Their calculation shows that they would be $12,968 short of that, so they are under target share. Okham, in the other, the last column, is $56,288 short of target share. In the past, our towns that were under target share would get assessed an additional sum of money to get them closer to target, and that used to create the second disparity when I go to calculate assessments, and they would get a greater share of the pie. But the only time that you get that additional assessment is if your shortfall on line, between lines 21 and 22, I have a little note, if the shortfall is between 2.5 and 7.5 percent of your target share, you get an added increment, a penalty fee, of 1 percent. Neither of the towns are at that point, so they're not, they're not getting the penalty this year. Claire Hendra was so excited that they weren't getting the penalty this year, when we had our meeting earlier, so excited, we didn't get penalized. That's good. Hubbardston and Okham aren't getting penalized, but what's happening is Barry, Hardwick, and New Braintree are getting reductions. So, if you look in the third, the middle box on the bottom, Barry, Hardwick, and New Braintree are getting a reduction of 85 percent of their overage. So, you see, it's in red on mine, I'm sorry. On line 18, Barry's preliminary number, on line 15, is being reduced by $124,000. Hardwick's is being reduced by $24,000. New Braintree is getting reduced $53,000. And then you come up with the required local contribution that is used to develop our assessments. That's on line 19 for the ones over target share, and on lines 24, for the two that are under target share. Let me just point out the New Braintree number. If you look at Hardwick, and they're being reduced by $24,000, New Braintree's getting reduced by more than double that, and that impact is seen on the assessments when New Braintree's required local contribution for Quabbin only is actually a reduction. I have never, ever seen a reduction in required local contribution. It's the first time that I've seen that. I had to check my numbers twice to make sure I didn't make a mistake. That's, I've been doing this for 24 years now. So, that's how one part of the assessment formula can throw, New Braintree to get a 1.3 percent increase in assessment for Quabbin, but Okham to get a 6.4 percent increase in Quabbin. But that's only one part of the formula. The other part of the formula is enrollment. Hubbardston, below target share, and increased number of students, getting even a bigger piece of the pie this year. So, I hope if you just spend some time looking at the math that I've tried to do, and I can send you the spreadsheet if you'd like to see the formulas along the way, because basically I took the DESE report and created formulas here, and just read the information behind it, you'd get a better understanding of what the state is trying to do. As simple as I could make it, Mr. Wiggler.
So, you can explain to the town administrators.
Well, I have to tell, I will admit...
We're happy about Groton Dunstable guy, because he owns regional schools.
I have to, I have to admit, though, I don't understand the formula for education aid right now. I don't. I don't believe there is one. Because if there is one, once this number is set, because it's based on a town's property wealth and income levels, right? So, once it's set, it should not change, especially since we're using 2016 property values and 2015 income levels, right? It should not change. Then tell me why last July, the legislature changed these numbers for all five of our towns. So, there really, there can't be a formula. But when there was 33 different elements to the formula, Al Tutella and I understood that one, because it was very easily laid out. That was one of the things he made me learn when he hired me, was the Chapter 70 formula. But I have to say, there can't be one, if they can change it in July, and if you're based on a data that's two and three years old.
In your quote, that's item number 14, municipal revenue growth factor, when they started fooling around with that one?
Well, that, that number comes from the Department of Revenue, so I don't exactly know how it's, what it's based on.
But that started moving, you said it was consistent previously.
No, I see these up here are consistent.
But no, but when you, on line 14, you said, look at Barry, it was 3.65.
Yep.
And then you said there was a difference now, as you look all the way over to 3.3.
But that's generated based on town numbers, Mark. What I, what I was meaning to say was, up above, everybody's levels were increased at the same rate.
Okay.
Except at the municipal revenue growth factor, they're not, they're not increased at the same rate.
The municipal revenue growth factor is everything to do with how many new building starts you have, new, new things coming on the tax rolls.
So, that's going to, that's going to be a variable.
Well, that's a variable, and it...
It's on your piece that you were just explaining, all of a sudden, there's a changes now, which was never before.
No, I still don't know what you're getting at.
Well, I'm talking about the thing you just talked about, how to...
Which is a property percentage?
Yes.
Well, that, that's just a standard percentage of the total.
I was referring back to what happened for FY18, and if this is truly a formula based on data from two years ago, the required local contributions of our towns should not change. But last year in FY18, the legislature changed them in July. Luckily, there's, I can't call it a regulation, it's more of an advisory that DESE issued. The first time they did that, the first time they started playing with required local contributions, which is the base of our assessment formula, was in 2010, and we all went screaming to the legislature, saying, you can't change it. It's the base of a regional agreement, a regional school district's assessment formula. They promised, they promised, they won't do it, they won't do it, they did it again the very next year. But what the DESE did was they put out an advisory. If a regional school district has an approved budget...
You can ignore it.
Before the legislature changes those minimum, those minimum local contributions, you do not have to go back to town meeting and get another vote. So, we had our, our budget voted in June, we didn't have to make changes. But what we told the legislature when they did it the first time was, when you do that, we have to go back and all of a sudden try to explain to a town why their budget number has completely changed. But I guess they didn't listen very closely, because they did it again for this year.
And I was going to say, thank you, as Mark's saying, to try to explain to all of us, and you do, but at the same time, we have an obligation to be able to understand this, explain this, and also work with questions. So, we will be confronted with questions like that. Will you always be available to us if we have any questions, as we continue to go through this process?
Always.
Thank you.
Always.
I'm just clarifying, because we have new folks on the committee to make sure, because as complicated, I've only been here for 14 years, and we still don't have a formula that is accurate, and appropriate, and everything else, and everyone else talks about, that it can be willy-nilly, and it's squishy, and it's wrong. So, I appreciate the, getting down as deep as you can in the weeds, to help us understand step by step.
Cheryl. When, my, on your explanation, DC questioned the legislators about the move they made on the adjustment there that we're talking about?
Yes, we screamed.
Okay, so you screamed about it, you screamed to the legislators or the DC?
We screamed to the legislators and DC, because it's probably a joint thing, and they will never tell you why it actually happened. My guess is they're taking, they're taking care of some district, and there'll be winners and losers, and it all depends who has the, you know, legislative clout.
The first few years that they did it, they would not change the bottom line of the total of all five of our towns, it would be the same total, but it would be different throughout our towns. Last year, the act... Last year, they actually raised the total amount for us, but like I said, you won't find them on my reports, because we had an approved budget by that time they did that. Okay, all set? You can go.
Thank you very much. When I started this off, I asked, I asked for a one-paragraph explanation.
You can't do that.
No, this is very comprehensive, I think I have a better understanding, but hopefully you'll be there to refer and question.
You want one paragraph, Dr. Allen wants three bullets, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I do have some other things to report on tonight. I have a food service update for you, just to inform the committee that the district has joined forces with other districts to create a new buying group for next school year. A lot of the districts were not satisfied with the service that we were getting from our current collaborative, so they took measures to, to create a new purchasing group. We are the district that is the furthest west. The food service director and I went to many meetings pleading to let us be there. The first meeting we went to, and they had the Massachusetts map up there, and the districts that were interested in creating this new group, and I said to Kerry, crap, we're the final, it's the furthest west, they're not going to take us, they're not going to take us. We went to every meeting, we made sure we were there and made sure we were heard, and they accepted us in the group, so we're very happy. We also said, I'm going back, I'm calling Wachusett, because if they, Wachusett gets in, they'll come out here to us. Wachusett joined, so we were able to get them to take us. It's a very exciting time, because what it does is, the teams of the food service directors right now are going to a lot of meetings and going to a lot of food shows, which I'm going to next Friday, to bring, to create the bid list that will be brought forward. A lot of times, what was happening is, something that we serve for our students and is very popular here, especially at the middle high school level, the collaborative tech that's based out of Boston, the Boston area, would drop the item, and then we're left with, oh my God, we've got something that we don't want to serve in that place. This time, this group is, they listen to everybody, and if you want one certain thing, it's going to be on there. Nobody else has to buy it, but it's going to be on the bid. So they're working to bring new and better tasting foods to our students. The bad news? Yes, sir.
Do you have a notion of what kind of savings we'll get with this?
Not until the bid goes out, no. Not until the bid goes out. I'm hoping that'll be much better, because what's happened is, so many of the groups have left. Our buying group has a lot of purchasing power, where with a lot of districts that are within the four ninety-five loop, so we have a lot of members, hopefully with the quantity, we'll be getting better deals.
Do you think we'll get two percent, five percent?
I wouldn't, you never know, Dr. Allen. I went out to bid with Wachusett on transportation, I was hoping to come back with something good, I came back with something that was pretty terrible. So until the bid goes out there, I can't say what it's going to look like. But I do have, I do have high hopes. On the bad side of food service, at the end of February, only Ruggles Lane and the Middle High School are profitable at this point. And the major reason is this year, it's not because of reduction in participation, it's because of our repair level. We've spent over twenty thousand dollars on repairs already this year in Feb, through February, when last year we spent fourteen thousand dollars for the whole year. We have to, we have to realize that the equipment in the kitchens is at least as old as the buildings are. We have not done any major, put any influx of money into kitchens, except for in the middle high school, when we decided that we would stay in-house and not go to a contracted service, we did replace some equipment in the high school. Things that we are currently concerned with, the dishwasher at New Braintree is down, and that's just not New Braintree this year, it's Okam and New Braintree students. Last that I knew, and I haven't talked to Kerry in two days, is we believed, we believed it was the boiler at first, now we think it's just a control panel, so we're waiting for a vendor with the snowstorm and whatever. I don't think he's, was able to come out to see if we can get that control panel fixed or replaced. If we can't, it'll be a town responsibility to give us a, get us a dishwasher, because it'll be over the five-thousand-dollar limit by the regional agreement. Until that time, we're prepared to go to paper. The walk-in refrigerator at the middle high school is in desperate need of probably replacement of at least the condensation units. It has been down for two days in the month of March already, and we did have to discard two days' worth of milk. We keep doing that, we're not going to be in the profitable black in the middle high school very much longer. We did talk to the town of Okam officials when we started the asbestos abatement project in Okam, that we were concerned about the stove oven unit that was in Okam. We can't determine the age, our contractor has no idea to even, how old the machine could be. He guesses it's about sixty years old. It wasn't fully functionable, functional when it was moved prior to the project. Our staff is concerned when we go to put it back in, it may not, may not run. But the town of Okam officials are aware of that this time. Over the summer and into September, we had problems with all of the refrigerators and all of the freezers in every school going down. So we're looking at some major capital investment as we move forward. And if there's no reduction in schools, that means we're going to be looking at them in all the buildings. We did send a request from the capital plan to all of the town administrators for what was requested for the capital plan for this year. I will let the town of, New Braintree Town Administrator know what's going on with the dishwasher when I know more. Other than that, I have other things later on in the agenda.
Oh, good.
More good news.
All right. Teacher Advisory Council.
Just quickly, I'd like to brag about our students and a couple of our teachers. I know Dr. Allen, Mr. Spear, I saw you both at the auditorium on Wednesday evening for incredible performance. I'm biased, because my daughter was in it, but you did very well. It was excellent. Tony Brown and Peter Lewis did a phenomenal job. The auditorium was packed. In fact, this music was, started to do some standing room only seats towards the end of the concert. The thing that was so great about it is that you had elementary students performing, you had middle school students performing, and you had high school students performing, then they all came together to perform at the end, and it was really top-notch. So depending where this budget stuff goes, please don't go after the music program. It is incredibly important, especially to some of our students that struggle a little bit in the classroom, to have that type of outlet. So I hope we can continue to have that support. Tomorrow night, Carla Peterson will be having a similar concert that will be the choral group. I will be there. Hopefully, some of you might attend as well. So it was really outstanding. The last thing I wanted to talk about, too, was school security. It's not something we want to talk about, but it's something we need to talk about, and something we need to talk about not just the week or two after something like Parkland happens. I feel as though our administration, and by that I mean Dr. Marshall and the principals as well, are doing the best that we can. The one request that I would have of Dr. Marshall and of the principals in the building is, you saw that dramatization, excellent job, they're very good. I think it would be really beneficial, and I know there's been talks about it, maybe six or seven years ago, we did an active shooter scenario with the teachers and the staff. And I think at a PD in the near future, that would be something very well received by a lot of people. Many students and faculty after Parkland certainly are a little bit more anxious. And I think that's a good thing. I think we need to continue to be, so that we're as prepared as we possibly can be. But I absolutely feel as though administration is on the ball with this issue, and, you know, let's hope we're just always prepared, obviously. So that's all I have this evening.
Thanks. Questions? Anybody? All right, so let's go into Subcommittee. I don't see Celine here, so I assume there's no student advisory. Subcommittee reports, admin review?
Nothing.
Audit? Nothing. Budget anymore? Are we good?
We're good.
Okay. Central office, are we good, or?
We're good. Planning for success, strategic plan, working with the administration for that to come forward in the spring and later in the spring.
Okay. Collective bargaining?
Okay. We may go into executive session.
We have executive session, just for a very brief item.
Okay. Planting facilities, they had left, so I assume nothing. Ad hoc asbestos abate, now are we done with that?
We're done.
All right, so we can-
We're done with that.
All right, so we can remove that.
We can remove that.
All right. Policy review, reform, and all the nice things you have on there.
Yeah, there's somewhere between a flucker and a public flucker and a half policies on the table. I presented all of them, you know what they are, and then the motion that we took.
Okay, all in favor? I presume there's no discussion. Opposed? Abstentions? Good. Sped? Anything? Okay. Quemp?
There, we have a meeting on the fourteenth, and at that time, the Central Massachusetts Commission will be presenting the results of this survey that's been out in the public. I hope you've all taken it. And that's about it. But the fourteenth is the next meeting.
Okay. Fourteenth, next week.
I do have a question with that. Is there going to be another notice being sent out so that those people who may have gotten a notice to fill out?
My plan was to send one tomorrow morning. Yep, just as a reminder, today's the last day.
Tomorrow's the last day.
Yeah, tomorrow's the ninth. And they've received numerous other emails, too.
They've caught under a number of names.
And Okam's actually had it on their, like, I don't know, their sign, because I've seen that, you know, coming around the corner.
Okay. Good. Tech?
Nothing.
All right. Unfinished business? Nothing, I presume. Public comment? No school committee concerns? Richard?
Yeah, three things. Most of which have been touched on, but it's worth reiterating. I want to start with basketball. The season is over. Our little mighty team, with no size at all, managed to comport themselves quite well. But there were some things that I noticed that I think are worth commenting. They have a female assistant coach. Now, how often do we see a girls' team with a guy coach? Was a guys' team with a girl coach? I thought that was pretty good. Secondly, senior night, we have a manager, and any of you, you've seen him, but he's famous for the halftime, he shoots his lungs. He got put into a game. It was an important game. But it was senior night, he was a senior, so he got put in. And discipline. Somebody was telling me, you know, he doesn't just teach basketball. He teaches discipline and comportment. When I go, he has them look you in the eye, shake your hand, some socialist, some of the kinds of things that Roddy does, which I think are, are pretty good. And we have probably our best defensive player, and I have seen him struggle with discipline with this fellow. And he's worked mightily, and the kid has done pretty well most of the time, but not all of the time. He was late for school, he was late for school, he was late for school, and the fourth time, it's, you know, they made the clock tournament, they made the districts. You know what? No matter how good you are, you don't do that, and you play in the districts. And he didn't get to play. Now, I think that's a much more important life lesson for this fellow than for him to use his, what are quite considerable athletic skills in the game, and you know who I'm talking about. So I thought that was pretty good. The concert, and I'm glad you brought that up. I was out working out down in the gym, what are all these cars doing here? Oh, it's a concert. Oh, man, I like music, but. A hundred and seventy of our kids. Sue told me that the auditorium has four hundred and fifty, and most of them were pretty full. The end, when they had people in there, there's Louis dancing on the armrests, trying to conduct the elementary, the middle, and the high school. And it was, it was a terrific sort of thing. They have an artist in residence, this composer named Mackie, national, he's coming for three days at the end of the month. Now, that's a good, thriving, and this was not the chorus and not the orchestra, and still they had a hundred and seventy kids there. I thought that was really good. And then this lockdown thing, and I'm thinking, my friend Brad here, came up after, it was a week ago, I think, and said, well, what about this teacher? What about our mean teachers? What are we, you know, the buildings, how? I said, you know what? We're not going to do that. This district is proactive. We had this conversation. The police chief came to us and said, you know, we ought to put a, we ought to put a police, policeman, we ought to police presence in the building, and we work out the policies and the procedures and how to do it, and what it means, and that sort of thing. And we did this well before this latest rounds of things. And then I found out about this Alice business, and Walter was there, and David was there, and you saw Steve Brewer was there. I think Steve was instrumental in helping get the money from the bank, and I know, it was a terrific thing, and it was interesting watching, well, here's what the procedure used to be. You lock the door and you hide in the corner. What was it, seventy percent of them would get shot, I think with that. Well, now, here's a better procedure. You run away. And I think the percentage shot was much lower, and then we all left because the snow was coming down pretty good. There was another procedure after that, which I didn't quite get. But again, what I thought, it's not just putting out fires, it's trying to be proactive, look ahead, down the line. And I thought, it was great that you asked this question, Brad, because this is really important. But it was, it's great that the district was proactive in doing something and was a little bit ahead of the line.
Well, I would, I would just say that we started our Alice training in, in the early part of the fall, and there are things that we need to do to make adjustments in doors and so forth in order for us to do the drills. And, you know, I know Claire and I, we've been on top of that with Peter and Jay and so forth, and I know you guys have some new ideas after your Alice training, so we can't do what he's asking us to do, which we need to do, until we fix that problem in the elementary schools. So we've, our elementary schools, many of them have unification points, they have places to go and to walk off campus. We're upgrading our camera systems in our elementary schools so that we'll be able to identify, you know, what part of the building is the perpetrator in, very quickly. So we can say they're in A block. A block means you can, if you're in D and E, escape. If you're in A block, lockdown. If you're, so we are working on our camera stuff, and the cameras are cheaper and better than they've ever been before, so that's good news for us. So there's lots of pieces to getting us to a point where we are really ready to do the active shooter drill with all the accoutrements. We hope to have at least ready to do a preliminary one, maybe not with all the camera accoutrements before the end of the school year in each of our schools. We do have some stress, some real struggles. We have the Kelly Day program for our multiply handicapped students, our very young multi-handicapped students in Hubbardston. So we have been working with Alice to look at kids who are totally immobile. They're nearly on gurneys, they have feeding tubes, I mean, really extraordinary stuff, and understanding, how will we manage that? And so CAPS Collaborative have been over, they have gone through some preliminary drills, some, what about this, what about that? Because that is truly, truly, I mean, some of you who know of some of the issues with that student population, it's a real challenge for us in Hubbardston, but not one that we're shying away from, so just to let you know that. We know that we have not heard back from the Hubbardston Selectment at all about whether or not they want to share building, and so we're going to be writing them a letter preparing to offer the CAPS Collaborative another year extension on, on their, on our rental.
It's interesting how the, how things change as you're looking at the environment. Forty, fifty years ago, the reason doors were pushed out was for fire cure purposes. Because you have heavy doors, you want to get the kids out of school quickly, you want to be able to push that door out, because you don't want pulling in.
And that still is part of the fire code in some buildings.
Well, I know that, but now you're looking, I mean, it just makes logical sense to say you want the door coming in so you can blockade it in case you have to. Who would have thought of that fifty years ago? I mean-
Yeah, sadly, nobody, I guess.
Okay. Other comments? Excuse me. School committee concerns? Okay, I have one, quickly, and I'm going to bring Greg into this in a bit. We got a letter addressed to the school committee. I won't read the whole letter, it's from a young lady who's a sophomore. I'll read you the first sentence, though, because it gives you the gist of what's going on. "I'm writing to you in regard to the new policy stating that if you play a Quabbin varsity sport, you may get two-point-five wellness credits for that school year." This young lady, who did play a sport, is now into full-time kind of horseback riding. And she competes, according to the letter, in horseback riding. So her thought is that, because I gave up field hockey, where I might have gotten these wellness credits, is it possible that we can look at it so that I might get credits for horseback riding? And so to get the idea of how the wellness credits work and the whole deal, I'll turn it over to you.
So what happens is, they don't get two and a half credits if they play a varsity sport, but they get, they get the requirement for those two and a half credits waived, because, so we have a wellness requirement for-
It's PE, basically.
It's PE. Wellness, it's wellness and health classes. They need to take what the equivalent of 10 credits over four years, which is a two and a half credit course each year over the course of the four years. They take a health course in their freshman year, they have the opportunity to take PE each of the four years that they're there, and there are other health courses that they can take to meet that requirement. What the school committee decided in the past year is that if a student plays on a sport at the Quabber Regional High School, that the requirement for the two and a half credits in the year that they play the sport is met by them playing that sport. They don't receive two and a half credits for the sport, but they've met the requirement as far as the graduation requirement. So if you're on the varsity football team, or if you're on the varsity basketball team, or the soccer team, or any of those teams, the thinking is that you put in the number of hours and the effort, and you learn enough from doing that to meet the requirement the school committee set forward in terms of the graduation requirement. A two and a half credit course is the equivalent of 60 classroom hours, plus whatever work there is. And in a lot of varsity sports, they put in much, much more than 60 hours over the course of a season. So that's kind of where that is. I had a conversation with this young lady. Her contention is that she puts many, many, many more hours into this program that she's involved in than the 60 hours or even the amount of hours it might be at an athletic sport or academic athletic sport in the school. I couldn't give her an answer that, yes, I can do that, because it's outside of the realm of the school. She's, you know, it's something that's different in a way. But I encouraged her to contact the school committee to see if that's something the school committee would consider in regard to whether or not she could use that to meet the graduation requirement. I was not comfortable saying to her, yes, go ahead and do that, on my own. So that's why she reached out to the school committee, because I couldn't, I was uncomfortable saying, yes, go ahead and do that. It's drastically different from what we have in our system.
Right. So the, so the approach or the thought right now is that we're looking at, to be able to waive these 2.5 credits if you're doing a varsity sport, we're looking at a competitive situation.
Yes.
So in other words, you know, in discussions I've had with others, something like, gee, I like to go on my skateboard for three hours a day or something. Not really a competitive situation, even though, you know, it could be considered athletic. So, you know, the question is, if we want to consider this, you don't want to blow it up wide open, especially because it might be difficult to assess what the person is really doing. On the flip side, I mean, I have neighbors who have horses, and there are young ladies who keep their horses there. And I'm blown away at how much time they, I mean, if I get up to let my dogs out at 7:30, I see then usually young girls out there in the snow feeding the horses, et cetera. So I know that even with not being competitive, they spend a lot of time there. So, you know, I might be a horse aficionado, even though I don't have a horse. But, so these are things, I, you know, we can't decide tonight, and I don't expect to decide tonight, but it's something like, how, you know, how do we want to approach this?
I would recommend that it go to policy.
Right, but then we're looking at, no, but then we're looking at our talk.
Well, I was going to ask Dr. Allen anyway, whether or not we could have an April meeting, maybe preceding a typical meeting or whatever. I have more policies that I'd like to, got to get cleaned up.
He looks pretty excited over this stuff.
He does look excited. And we might be able to also agenda that particular discussion as well. But, you know, I'd love to finish up a few more policies, if we might, Dr. Allen. I think, I think that's, I think that's a yes.
I heard an affirmation.
Oh, no, I've got a lot of other.
It's precedent setting.
Well, when we did this policy, the mother was here and expressed her position. With great vigor, I would say, those of you there.
So, so what does that mean?
She was quite adamant. You can do it, Dr. You can do it.
Do we want to, you know, it's, I mean, it's kind of a thorny issue, because it's out of the school, it's out of school. It's an out-of-school situation, and I could see others. Well, I know, and I could see others bringing, if you open this, I can understand, you know, somebody else saying, well, if she can do that, then, right, sure. But, but I think that we should address it, though. I mean, you know, however we do, we should address it. It's a letter to the school committee, I mean.
The way to handle it, which Greg will not appreciate, is if it's presented to the principal, and he agrees that it is a legitimate endeavor of this kind of vigor and is worthy, then it gets brought to the school committee.
Well, Sheila's not here, let's make the superintendent do it.
Now, I have firsthand knowledge of.
Horse people.
Horse people. Horse teenagers. There's a varying amount of.
Effort.
Yes. There's, there's girls that go down to the barn for 15 minutes, get on their horse, and leave. Then there's, then there's girls that go down there, and they're there for six and a half, seven hours. So if there's a way of recording the amount of effort and hours that are spent, if this ever goes to a vote, I will abstain, because this has. I have first, my daughter is a horseback rider. But she didn't like it, no.
I can appreciate, no, I, my concern is that I somehow I'd like to address it. If Dr. Allen feels like the mom was there at the meeting, and you discussed this and addressed it, and feel that we're good to go until, you know, next year if somebody else raises it, that, you know, that's, that's one approach. Notwithstanding Maureen wanting to have you do some stuff in April anyway, that's a whole nother issue. I can appreciate your, I mean, you know, there are horse people, there are dog people. You know, the same thing. It's, people train their, somebody could say, gee, I spent three hours a day training my dog. Maybe they do, but, you know.
Yeah, no, but it is.
No.
There are sports.
Yeah, absolutely. The dog show every year.
Yeah, no, no, sure.
Where they run along with them.
But the dog's doing it.
Yeah, but they're with them.
This is an argument I have with my daughter all the time. She's the, she's the athlete, the horse is just being led.
The other thing that I think this will, that will come up here are things like dance. I have a student who spends a great deal of time kayaking. I have students that do an awful lot of things outside of school, and there would have to be very, very tight parameters for how, if the school committee is in support of having kids do things outside of the school's purview and having it count towards the graduation requirement, all I would ask is that you seriously consider making it very, very formal and tight.
When we have this meeting, we will ask the administration to give us regulations, which are all the things that you say.
Dave?
Greg, is this any terrible with the internship program? I mean, could you do something similar with intern, like you do with interns? Or is it going to be more complicated than that, or have to be more stringent?
You know, I, like, like Lee said, I mean, I can have a kid walk in the door and say, I skateboard three hours a day, but that's not something that's necessarily supervised or something that's, that there's, that there's. And there are kids that compete in skateboarding. There are things that are supervised and structured. I think that, you know, to entertain this, it really has to be very, very, you know, tight and very, very structured in terms of what kind of criteria they would have to meet to have us be willing to say, sure, we'll count that as a wellness requirement. So I think that if you make those guidelines that, not specific to dance, well, yeah. Well, and I'll present a set of guidelines if you're asking to do that, I have no problem doing that. And we want to make that so that really anybody who's involved with something organized can look at it and say, oh, jeez, what I do doesn't really meet this, so even though I love horseback riding and I'm doing this, the way I do it doesn't meet. Or I love dance, and I go to dance six hours a week, and then I go to competitions on the weekends, and I know that this, that my involvement in dance allows, you know, it meets the criteria. So I think that it's, I would appreciate if I'm being charged with coming up with those guidelines. I'm more than happy to do that, and I can make that presentation. But it will be something that will be.
Do you support that?
I don't know if I do. I don't know if I do. You know, but that's, you know, like I said, when this young lady approached me in the first place, you know, I said, I'm not going to say yes to that, but I, she wanted to pursue it beyond me.
So, so a child, so one of the kids, basketball, and gets the okay for the 2.5. Doesn't get 2.5 credits, but gets the waiver. So essentially, in the scheme of things, I can now, instead of taking a health course as a student, I can take some other course for 2.5 credits. In other words, I'm trading.
Correct.
Other courses, I'm trading within a system.
It creates a left of space.
Right, okay, I understand.
You know, but then you look at things like, well, let's say we have a kid that plays AAU basketball, but doesn't play varsity basketball.
Right. I understand, it's a whole, yeah.
It opens up an awful lot. But it's worth looking at it from a, you know, with a very critical eye, and I don't mean that in a negative way, but a very critical eye in terms of how, how should this actually happen? And I'd love to reach out to other principals around the state and see if anybody else does anything.
I don't, because they all do.
Don't because they all do?
If you, if you want, if you aren't interested in this, don't reach out.
Well, I'm not uninterested, I want to do what's best for kids.
Yeah, but I'm confused, because if you're going to present something at school committee.
Well, Dr. Allen has asked me to.
Right, but then you'd be providing guidelines, therefore, in my opinion, that would be promoting it. Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we're going to accept this guideline.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Well, I mean, if we were to consider it, how would it be managed?
Correct. Who would manage it? How would it be managed? Those kinds of things.
There are places like Westboro, and I think that they apply those credits only if it's a score within the school.
Well, that's what we do right now. That's what we do now.
Get behind the egg ball, Greg.
Mark, did you have your hand up or still?
Maureen answered it. If we do, we should listen, reset policy, if we have a concern, we should listen. We should at least do that. And then I think, you know, maybe we don't have to go in depth to major all over the state, but you do want to see what other districts might do. Like if, and how, and the criteria to make those adjustments. Right now, we have a policy in place, someone is asking a question, and I think it prohibits us. We are a public body, we have committees, and we should make that decision. So it's a healthy debate, I'm glad that we're doing this, and we'll have more information, because we will determine maybe what competitions might look and look at. And then are we going down a slippery slope to decide a skateboard versus swimming versus horseback riding? Again, same with fencing. There are folks that are in fencing competition that work extremely hard and may get credits in other districts. So I think we need to take a look at this and put it and frame it in the appropriate way.
My quick concern would be that if you allow this for the wellness curriculum, that it opens up the door for other areas, such as, I am an expert in robotics, I do online courses, I should get credit for Mr. Bulger's class now. That's my concern. But they're not getting credit. But, but you could get a letter from a kid who, if this policy becomes reality, says, there's the precedent for wellness, why can't it be opened to science? And I get you folks as a body would have to make that determination, but I fear that you're opening up to more than just wellness potentially. Kids will be all over that.
Okay, so, nobody has a problem if I respond and just say, we received your letter, we're looking into it. You know, the school committee discussed that we're looking into it, okay?
Are there things that they do in gym that we record to sort of get a gym health statistic on our students? Like when they run the mile, do they record that and say, the average is this or that?
They do keep, they do record performance over the course, over the course of the trimester.
For the individual student in general? I mean, would we be missing out maybe on gathering health statistics on students?
No, we don't, no, we don't have that kind of statistical information.
Alrighty. Let's see, new business. All right, first bullet is done. School calendar?
Evan and I had at least a text conversation about my worries about the weather and the number of days we have taken and pushing ourselves into that very last weekend, June, which I know from Claire's perspective is awful. If we miss, you know, a week of cleaning and repair, it's really difficult. And whether or not we should contemplate, and we've not had a deep conversation about this, but should we at least contemplate perhaps using a day or two in April? And, you know, making up a couple days. If we, if we're lucky and nothing bad happens, you know, for the next couple, three weeks, we'll be okay. Because this wasn't as bad as we thought. I thought maybe we were going to lose two, two days this week, but we did not. Monday looks like it's going south.
What's our tentative last day of school?
Uh, right now, it's.
June 21st, Thursday.
We're trying, we're trying to stay in that last week. We're trying, I would love not to have to do any of this, but.
June 21st, right now is last day of school.
Yeah, and, so that gives us one more day in that week, I think, the 22nd. So I'm hopeful that we can get through the rest of March and hopefully early April. With no other thing, I'll try as many delays or early releases or whatever we need to do. I did want to just mention for you in case we needed to get serious with our conversation.
Yeah, I would just like to say, I was supposed to have an executive board meeting of the QRTA today. It was obviously postponed. So I'm having that next week, so I can't really give an opinion for the teachers on this yet, except that what I'm going to do is discuss with the executive board and have them immediately see how teachers feel about this. You know, you're going to have teachers and students, there's pros and cons to it, obviously, but there's going to be some teachers and students who have vacation plans.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I'm also concerned about student attendance as well, but I recognize the importance of this. And I'm definitely going to bring it to the teachers for their consideration.
And we know we'll have the same problems that last week, because nobody figured we were going to be in school quite this long, and so there will be parents who rented a whatever, and kids, you know, so. Well, no, no matter what we do, it's not going to be great for any group. And we're just hoping that weather will make it so that we don't have to worry so much about it.
It might come as a shock to you, there's probably a lot better things going on with students with their work ethic in April and June.
Yeah.
Just in case.
Well, there are students from the graduating class of 2015 that are concerned, because they think they have the record for snow days.
They may.
And they're, they're very concerned that you're being very flippant with your days off.
You mean, I'm giving them too many?
Yeah.
I'll tell you, there was a couple mornings with flash freezes that were very scary for us, for sure. Well, if we could, if we could get, you know, the next thing to go to, you know, go south of us and out to sea, we'll be good.
The seniors will be, it'll be interesting to see their reaction if we end up having school enable, because they're, they don't have to make up snow days, but they will.
Well, yeah, but if they make up a couple days, it's probably not, I'm not, you know, seeking to make up the whole week. I'm just looking to, to see if we could, if we, if necessary.
It'll be amusing, is what I'm saying.
Is Good Friday in there?
No, we go to school. I already thought of that one, yeah. And as far as the 2018-19 school calendar, because of the management of release days around test dates and for MCAS, I'm waiting for Sheila just to kind of finalize that, and then we'll have it out to the QRTA for their review.
Alrighty. Contract approval with Vanpool for special education transportation.
Yes, I'd like the committee to consider approving a contract with Vanpool for special ed transportation. The reason that this contract is coming to the committee is by mass general law, any contract that is for five years or more must get school committee approval. I cannot approve that as the chief procurement officer. But I'd like to do a little background on special ed if I could. As you all, most of all of you know, we did a joint bid with Wachusett for special ed transportation services that was not successful, and the two responses we received were deemed non-responsive to our specifications. Our current vendor, Vanpool, put in a bid, but only for a few routes, not all of the routes. And AA Transportation put in only, bid on only one of our routes. So it was not a very successful joint venture. Of the routes that Vanpool, our current vendor, provided, the increases in rates range from zero for our one out-of-state route to 18%. So the district instead negotiated directly with Vanpool and has tentatively agreed upon a three-year contract with two one-year renewal options at a 5% increase in the first year. Years after that, an increase would be based on the Consumer Price Index of the U.S. Labor Bureau for the Northeast Region. And before anybody gets concerned about the 5%, I have a little history here for you. In FY '08, we had a one-year contract with Vanpool that is 0% increase over the year before. It, for FY '09, '10, and '11, there was one 2% rate, or 2% increase. For FY '09, it went up 2.5%, stayed at their rate for two years. Stayed at that rate, 0%, three more years. Went up in FY '15 for 2.5%. Stayed at that rate for another three years, and they're asking for 5% now. I think it's justified. It's within our budget, that we had budgeted for this year. And of course, the two years would be options at the school committee's purview when we come to that time. I can't make that decision either. So I would like you to vote affirmatively for issuing this contract to Vanpool for the 2019 through '21 school year.
Motion?
Move the recommendation.
Second, Mark, okay. Any discussion, questions? Okay, any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Or do we, we don't need a...
No, just a majority.
Okay. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The second thing on the agenda tonight for me is, uh, to request a price increase for school meals for the upcoming school year, little history on that. Um, currently, breakfast is a dollar fifty at both the elementary and the secondary level. We're proposing that it gets increased by twenty-five cents to a dollar seventy-five. There, it, there are no entitlement dollars for the breakfast program, which means there's no federal subsidies of food for the breakfast program. I'm not sure where you could get a breakfast for a dollar fifty, like we're currently paying. Um, currently, our lunch is two seventy-five at the elementary level with a federal subsidy of forty-three cents. The district receives a total of three dollars and eighteen cents for each paid meal. Currently, the per price, per, price per plate at our elementary level ranges from two dollars and seventy-eight cents to three dollars and forty-seven cents. This means that we are losing money with each lunch sold at Hubbardson Center School and New Braunian Triocia. Currently, lunch at the high, middle high school is three dollars with the federal subsidy of forty-three cents. We receive a total revenue of three dollars and forty-three cents for each meal at that level. The per plate cost at the middle high school is only two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Although the non-labor costs are much greater at the high school, the labor costs are significantly lower. If we, if we look at the charts and graphs, we actually are understaffed at the high school, but we make it work very well. If our equipment repairs continue as they are, like I reported earlier tonight, we may be at, looking at a loss this school year, which we haven't seen in, I believe, four years in our district. Um, just, I did do, um, homework, and I think I forgot it, the last time we raised school lunch prices was for the fifteen, uh, fourteen, fifteen school year. So I would like you to consider that for tonight. If, uh, a price increase will not go into effect for next school year, we would most likely be mandated for the year after that, because the USDA mandates to stay within a certain pricing level, and we've done the calculations, and we believe we would need, need to go up, we would have to by mandate to do that. The last time we looked at this number was when Mr. Boivier was here, and as he explained to the committee, it's better to go up a year beforehand and, and do it in one lump sum rather than to do, go up by, by, the least you can go up by is a dime. So instead of going up a dime and then up a dime, or up a dime and then up fifteen cents, it's better to go up twenty-five cents to begin with, and then you don't seem to have that fluctuation in participation due to cost.
So are you basically saying, then, you're going breakfast from one fifty to one seventy-five, to from two seven, what are you doing at the element?
At the elementary level, it'll be two seventy-five to three dollars. At the middle high school level, three dollars to three twenty-five.
For lunches?
Yeah, lunches. Breakfast is the same across the district, a dollar fifty.
So it'll be one seventy-five, three dollars and three twenty-five.
And I know we have newer members, we haven't spoken with this since, I mean, Tex and Charlie didn't, when we had that whole thing, but explain how different the budget, the cafeteria part of our budget is.
Oh, the cafeteria is, is supposed to be a self-sustaining program, so the revenues and expenses come out of that program. The only part of the budget, um, the general operating budget of the district that pays for school lunch is if we have, um, bad debts, meaning, uh, somebody has to pay for the lunch. So if you're a student who's free lunch or gets a reduced-priced lunch, you pay nothing, or you pay forty cents, and the government pays that other, to the values that I said. Um, if you're a paying student, we get a little subsidy from the state. But if you actually take the lunch and don't pay your bill, the school lunch program by statute can't run in a negative revenue, so the district has to put that in. So at the end of every year, for yous that have been here a couple of years, I come at the end of the year, I say, this is our bad debts for the year, the school committee, I have to make a transfer from somewhere to cover those bad debts. Luckily, last year, I believe, it was only around five hundred dollars or something like that.